Handsome young men. We will call our meeting to order. Madam Secretary, would you please take the role?
Yes, all board members are present.
Thank you. Next, if you would stand and join us in the pledge. We have some very special guests with us. Eric, Ben, and Isaiah are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. The first item we have on our agenda, under our presentations and our district update, is our spotlight on excellence. Into that, we turn to Dr. Tim Ferris.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Barris Ford, and members of the school board for providing me an opportunity to recognize one of our teachers. We have Angela Snyder here and her husband, Tony. It is my pleasure, on behalf of the entire Creekside staff and Carmel Clay Schools, to recognize Angela Snyder this evening. Angela is our math department chair and eighth grade math teacher at Creekside. We are very fortunate to have Angela as part of our team, as she serves both students and staff. She is very knowledgeable, dedicated, and passionate, in a good way, as an educator. Angela was recently recognized as a 2020 recipient of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching by the National Science Foundation, on behalf of the White House. That's a lot. The Presidential Award is considered the highest award given by the U.S. government to kindergarten through grade 12 teachers of mathematics and science. The award recognizes teachers that have both deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful in those areas. Angela was the only mathematics teacher in the state of Indiana to be selected for this award. Angela, on behalf of Creekside and Carmel Clay Schools, congratulations. We are very proud of you. Thank you for the services you provide to our students and staff. Thank you for making a difference each day in our school community. Great job. Thank you. Can you go ahead and come on up?
I started my career here in the 1990s as a short-term substitute teacher. So that was a long time ago.
Oh, it's not that long.
And honestly, we have amazing teachers here. And it's because of the teaching staff and working together with great people like Kristen Taylor, that you're going to hear from later, and Laura Chen also. Don't mean to leave you out there. But it's because of those experiences that we're able to thrive as teachers. And the collaboration is just amazing in this district. You don't find that everywhere. So I want you to know that it does exist here, and we're better because of it. So thank you.
Well, Angela, thank you for those wonderful words. And it is reassuring to the board to hear such kind, inclusive words of our district from our professional educators. And we thank you for bestowing that great award onto all of us here at Carmel Clay School. So congratulations to you and your family. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, we have the approval of consent. And on tonight's consent, we just have claims, payroll, and the personnel report. May I get a motion to approve consent?
No move.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor of supporting consent, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Five approved. Next on the agenda, we actually have our action item. It is the resolution in form of lease for renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School. Into that, we turn to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. As the board is aware, we are doing a number of projects at Carmel High School, as well as other schools. We originally presented these projects to the board last summer. And in July and August, there were two public hearings held. Those hearings were referred to as a determination of need. So essentially, what happened is, is it was at those hearings that the board shared with the public that they had determined that there was a need, first of all, a need for the projects, and then, secondly, that there would be necessary steps taken in order to provide funding for the projects. And so, these projects in total are, we plan to have them funded with two general obligation bonds, one of which we recently closed on. And the general obligation bond is a school corporation bond. And the other bond, which is what's referred to this evening, is what's referred to as a lease rental bond. There is a school building corporation formed, and the building corporation legally will ultimately own the property on which the building, in this case, the additions for performing arts, will be built. And the school corporation then will lease those buildings. And it happens, it's more than coincidental, that the lease payment is exactly the same amount as the mortgage payment to pay off the bonds. And so, this process is necessary, because in Indiana, school districts cannot have debt more than 2% of the assessed value. And so, when you do large projects, this is the way they're done. And so, this evening, this resolution provides for that and provides for moving forward to form a school building corporation. We have had school building corporations in the past, but our attorney has recommended that we form a new one. The last building corporation we had was the 2002 Building Corporation. And so, the members of that corporation, over the years, have moved and are retiring and so forth. And so, we believe that it was best to recommend the formation of a new building corporation. But the process is the same. And so, part of this resolution provides for that. And it also provides for taking the next steps to not only form the building corporation, but the second part of this action item is to approve a form of lease. Because again, legally, the school district is leasing from this holding corporation basically the projects on which, or at least the portion of the projects on which they will own the property. And by the way, when the bonds are paid off, the documents also note that the property and the title reverts back to the school corporation. So there's a lot of legal lease in here, but that's essentially what happens. And with regard to the lease, there then will be, this evening, you're only asked to approve the form of the lease. And so, that lease document, there will also be a public hearings to present that to the public and invite their input relative to the lease, to the form of the lease and so forth. And so, the purpose this evening then, is the recommendation is to approve this resolution, which again, is one of the steps necessary to proceed with the projects and finance the projects, which you originally determined to do back in July and August.
Thank you, Roger. So to begin, may I get a motion on the table to approve the resolution and form of lease for the renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School?
Bill moved.
Thank you, Katie. A second? Thank you very much, Louise. Open this up for discussion. Roger, I have a question, just to get the ball rolling. When have we used this form of lease process in the past? I know we have approved this in the past for various building endeavors. I just can't recall exactly when.
Well, the most recent one is the two elementary schools that we're currently constructing. In fact, that process was very similar to what we're doing with these projects, in that the board first approved the sale of what we refer to as a 2019 general obligation bond. And a portion of that bond paid for the early site work for what now is Clay Center Elementary School. And then after that, a lease rental bond, bonds were sold to pay the majority of the cost of those two schools. And again, those bonds were sold through the 2002 School Building Corporation.
Thank you. Are there other questions about this process or about this? Yes, Pam?
Yes, you said this is a new building corporation, forming of a new building corporation. So this has nothing to do with any of the other building corporations that we've already had in the past?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's identical to those in the past, except, but the members of this are, it's a new building corporation with new members.
Okay, so the new directors are, the directors are different?
Correct.
So when you appointed the directors, who appoints the directors? Who has that authority?
The board. That's part of what you're moving forward, yes. That's what you're moving forward with this evening, based on the recommendation.
So if we don't know somebody on this, then that would be kind of difficult to appoint them, if I don't know who that is?
Well, I would understand that. However, we have, I don't know if we have any board members that were here in 2002, when that holding corporation was formed. So it's quite possible that some of you may not know the board members on the current holding corporation.
Okay, so are the articles of incorporation for the building corporation and the code of bylaws of the building corporation, those are different?
Different than?
Different than the ones that were in place before?
I would say, I haven't read them specifically, but I would believe that they are very similar, except referring to the, this building corporation as compared to the other building corporation. The format would be, I would believe, is either the same or very close to it.
Roger, have we had counsel or any attorneys, any of our attorneys, looking at this material prior to us seeing it?
Yes. David Day handles the building corporation. So it was David's recommendation that the board form a new building corporation. And he and I discussed who the members might be. And so, we, you know, kind of identified a number and ultimately ended up with, you know, the three that are being recommended.
Thank you.
Some of the individuals that we originally considered, one I can think of recently moved and moved, you know, just across the line to Westfield, didn't move very far, but we thought it would be, it may not be, we didn't know that, I don't know that it's not legal to have a member on the corporation that doesn't live here, but we thought it would be best to have it be a current community member. And so, David recommended that. And then, of course, the resolution and the form of lease, that's provided by our bond council. And so, all of this is completely provided and recommended by our school attorneys.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Mike?
So I'm just looking at the articles of incorporation that we have. And it looks like they've not been filed yet. So I assume that's waiting for our approval this evening. Does it make sense to name it something other than Carmel Clay School Building Corporation? What was, what's the prior one called?
The prior one was Carmel Clay School 2002 Building Corporation. And again, David's recommendation was, this was his recommendation in terms of the name. He felt that the previous one kind of dates the building corporation. And so, the name that's recommended is, certainly meets all the requirements. And it was thought to be just very straightforward. It's the Carmel Clay Schools Building Corporation. And that building corporation, as with previous building corporations, you know, it may stay in place for, you know, 20 years or more. And so, we thought it would be best not to date it in some way.
So I agree, because the prior one caused confusion when it was 2017 and we were using the 2003, 2003?
2002, yeah.
Okay. And then, I know you've already said that the bylaws are very similar to the prior corporation's bylaws.
Yes, I can think of, we've had three building corporations. Well, this would be the third, since I've been here since, you know, the early 90s. The one prior to the 2002, and I don't remember the name specifically, they all sound very similar, because they have Carmel Clay Schools in them. But that building corporation, among other things, was the building corporation used for the high school project in the 90s, in the early 90s. And I believe some other major projects that the school district did in the 80s even. But the one that I think of was the large high school project that actually started in the late 80s, I believe.
Okay. And then, according to the bylaws, we appoint the directors every year for a one-year term? I'm just reading that out loud for the rest of the board. I guess not more than a question to you.
Actually, I thought that once they were identified, that, I don't recall that we've come back and every year to have them reappointed.
Okay. Section 3.04 says term, "Each member of the board of directors shall serve for a term of one year or until his successor is appointed and qualified and/or until he slash she has resigned, removed, dies, incumbent director shall be eligible for reappointment." So I mean, the default is that if we don't do it, they continue?
That's what I thought maybe it was.
Any director may be removed with or without cause by the school board corporation?
But again, in this case, we completely rely on corporation council to advise us. And of course, they do that.
Understand. I have no other questions at this time?
I have an additional question to piggyback on what Mike has shared. Since there isn't any date in the name of the corporation, is there any reason that we would have to have a resolution for a new corporation at any point in time? Or can we just continue to use this resolution and just add people as necessary?
You could continue. And David and I discussed that as far as the 2002 Building Corporation. But his feeling was, is that, given how long that corporation has existed and the aging of the current members, as well as some members having resigned over the years. So, and I don't recall now if there's any, if the current members of the 2002 Building Corporation are the members that were in place, if any of them were actually in place in 2002, or if they've all, over the time, been replaced. And so, you could continue, because as you read it here, there's provision to appoint a new person if somebody dies or retires or leaves or whatever. So that is an option. But I think part of it was, also, we renamed the corporation so as to not have it dated.
Thank you. Are there other questions, Louise? Pam?
Yes, I just want to say, I'm having trouble approving this tonight, because in section three, it says that we approve the articles of incorporation of the building corporation and the code of bylaws of the building corporation. And I did not receive those until about 4:30 today. So I did not have a chance to read those, and therefore, I don't know that I approve them. So I just want you to know that.
Sure. I understand that.
Any other comments or questions at this time? Seeing no further questions or comments, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the resolution and the form of lease for the renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School, please signify by saying aye and raising their hand.
Aye.
For? Anybody opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, Pam. Let the record show, motion carries four to one. Thank you. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
And moving right along, we have math instruction. And we are very excited to have Dr. Dudley and her amazing team that I see sitting out here to have us work through a fun math workshop with our tutorial up here. And there's a lot of good stuff going on. So with that...
Thank you so much, Mrs. Fannenberg. We're so excited this evening to share with you a focus on math in the middle school classrooms. This actually, workshop has been over a year in the planning. Not that it took them that long to plan it, but they actually started planning this last year. And then, last year became a very crazy year, as you know, and so it was postponed. And so, we're so excited that we can have Dr. Rhonda Peterson, one of our Directors of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Mrs. Laura Chen, an instructional coach at Carmel Middle School, and Mrs. Kristen Taylor, our math department chair and eighth grade teacher at Carmel Middle School. We're also excited that Mrs. Pittman came to cheer them on this evening. So thank you for coming out tonight. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Peterson.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Yes, I am honored to be here and to speak on behalf of all of the teachers at Carmel Clay Schools who work hard in our classrooms every day. And we are doing some amazing things despite our current challenges, and we really want to celebrate those this evening. So I will not, I will skip introduction. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. But we also do have Angela Snyder here, so she can help us answer questions at the end of the presentation. That worked out perfectly. So, okay, so today, we're going to really highlight some of the key features that you may find in any given mathematics classroom, K through 12. You will find some of these components to varying degrees. It has been a shift over the last two decades that we're growing into as a district and also a nation. This shift is taking place nationwide. But the thing that we're most excited about as teachers is that it really is student-focused and responsive to the needs of our students. So we're going to highlight those features today. And so, someone might ask, if we're painting a picture of today's classroom, what might the differences be today versus two decades ago? And our teachers might say, it is definitely more student-centered. The classrooms are targeted to the students' needs. More active, you will see students moving around physically, but also engaging in conversations with the teachers and with one another. You will see them being very responsive to the students' needs of today. The kids that they have in the classroom on any given day, and it is extremely data-driven, differentiated, and flexible. You'll hear from Mrs. Taylor today how she uses something called exit tickets to collect data at the end of each day, which formulates her plan for the next day. That's that responsive, data-driven piece. And what are the components that you might find in an instructional block today? Well, one is a warm-up, and that's, we've always had that in a math classroom, but it may take on a very different feel, where the students are engaging once again, they're conversing with one another and with the teacher. We might call this a number talk, and you'll see that today. Also, we have a mini lesson. So instead of the teacher speaking and lecturing for long periods of time, they will target a lesson to a specific skill, maybe a 10 to 15-minute mini lesson, and then they'll send students off into guided math stations. During this time, students participate in individual work and practice time, or small group instruction with or without the teacher. I love this part of the workshop or the time together in the classroom. The teacher may stop what's going on in the middle of the time together in what we call catch and release. There may be some misinterpretation or another teaching point that our teacher wants to make sure everybody understands, and they'll catch and release and start class back again. We call that a mid-workshop teaching point. And then, lastly, and probably most importantly, we take time at the end of the time to reflect with our students, make sure that we are shoring up any misconceptions, looking at the day ahead tomorrow, and talking about what's ahead. And so, just lastly, most importantly, how does this help all of our students in Carmel Clay Schools and in our classrooms? Well, it is because the instruction is tailored to each individual student. Teachers work with small groups to ensure targeted interaction and focused instruction. Teachers strategically plan and execute segments of time within their math block in order to build strong relationships, which we know are key, and to strengthen responsive teaching for our students. So rather than listening to me talk about all the wonderful things of this, I want, we want to show you what it looks like. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Mrs. Laura Chen, who has been helping us with this movement for quite some time now. And she is going to show you what a number talk looks like, or a warm-up. And Laura?
I'm ready. I'm ready. So I'm here to help you guys experience what a number talk is like. And this can look very different depending on the grade level. But today, we're going to focus on basic arithmetic. And there's a reason for that. When students come to us, they're coming to us from a variety of backgrounds and a variety of readiness. And although basic arithmetic might not be part of the curriculum or the standards or even the learning target for that day in the classroom, we use this time to warm up our brains. up our brains, to think about math in a creative way. We find that some, you know, kids can have relational fluency with math, or they can have procedural fluency. Procedural fluency meaning, I can do all the steps, I can do them in order, I can get the right answer. And so, sometimes, when a kid can do that, it looks like they're understanding what they're doing. But that's not always the case. Since concepts in math build on each other, we need to have a better relational understanding of what we're doing. Why am I doing these steps and why do they work? So, in order to do this together, we are going to, you need to put away your pencils and paper. Everything that we're going to be doing is happening in our heads today. So, I don't want you writing the problem down, okay? It's all going on in your head. The second thing is, I'm going to write a problem horizontally up here on my board or my paper, and you are going to say quietly to yourself how to solve that problem. What is the answer, but also, what's going on in your brain? How are you solving it? And what I ask you to do, and if you were in my classroom, what I'd say is to put your fist near your heart, but since I can't really see you guys, you might want to put more like by your shoulders. So, if you have a closed fist, that tells me that you are still thinking, but if you put up one finger like this, that tells me that you have solved the problem, that you have a, I think you know the answer, but you also have a way of solving it. If you're still waiting and you come up with a second way, you can put a second finger, and then I'll know that you have more than one way of solving the problem. Okay? So, here we go. Don't be worried, I'm not doing anything too challenging today. Did you touch the markers before they were made? Not dried up because, okay, here's your problem. So, once again, no pencil, no paper. Your problem is 43 plus 56. Oh, thank you. What is it going to happen? Okay. Yes. Mr. Kirchner, what was your answer? 99, okay? We have 99. Did anybody get a different answer? Anyone? Sometimes it's happening. Now, Mr. Kirchner, would you mind explaining to me how you solved this problem in your head? What did you do? Give me just the one. Give me your favorite.
My favorite?
Yes.
I just added the two together.
You added the two together? There's always a Mr. Kirchner in the classroom, right? How did you, what did it look like in your head? Did you stack them vertically? Did you start on the left or on the right?
The first time I did it, I stacked it vertically.
You stacked it vertically? So, you had 43 plus 56? And you added traditionally up and down in the columns?
Yes.
Did you start with the ones or the tens?
I started with the three and the six.
Okay, great. So, then you came up with 99. All right. Okay. Who has a different way that they'd like to share? Ms. Jackson?
Well, I did it based on everyday math that we teach in our classes. My son taught me. So, we would take 43, and instead of stacking on top, we would go with 40, and we would go ahead and look at the 56, and instead of using 56, we'd use 50, which would give us 40 plus 50.
So, you did 40 plus 50?
Correct.
And?
That would be 90.
90.
Then we'd go to the ones place, because we still have to do something with that fabulous three and six.
Right.
So, we're going to add that three plus six, and we're going to get nine.
Mm-hmm.
So, now, we're going to bring all of these fancy numbers together, which is that 90 plus nine, and now we have Michael Kirchner's 99.
99. So, you both came to the same answer, but in a different way. What we call that strategy is starting from the left. So, you started with the largest place value, and you added those numbers together, and then you added your ones. Why did you decide to start with the numbers on the left?
Well, when I read, I tend to read left to right, so that's why I did.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. Who has a different way? Does anybody have a different way? Another way? Yes? Okay. Okay. So, you added your four plus five, but you knew that that was 40 and 50, correct, and not just a four and a five? Of course. And then you added three plus six, so very similar to another way. Does anybody have another way? Yes, Mr. Kirchner?
Yeah. I guess I added 50 plus 50 and then went back and took the difference.
Oh, okay. Tell me more about that. So, 50 plus 50.
So, I guess I rounded 43 up to 50.
Okay. So, you made 43, 50, you rounded.
Yeah, and then I guess I saw that, it's probably the backwards way, I probably wrote with a, I probably should have rounded 40 down to 43 down to 40 and 56 up to 60, and then realized I was one different.
Oh, okay. That works. So, we will revise here. 40 plus 60, and you realized that you had one less than 100, and you got 99. You know, boys and girls, something I like to do is borrow from one number and give it to the other. It's called give and take. So, I took the three from the 43, gave it to the 56, and made that 59, and then I added 40 back in and got 99. Okay. That's a little taste of a number talk. So, like I said, one of the reasons we do that is because we want to show students that there are multiple ways to solve a problem, and it gives us an idea of, you know, what's going on in their heads. And as the year goes on, and you do this more regularly, you get more and more students participating, and they pick up on each other's strategies, too. So, sometimes, a kid will come up with a strategy, and I'll think, oh, man, that works. I never realized that. So, even as a teacher, those students are coming up with ideas that I've never seen before as well. Okay. So, to continue math workshop, I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Taylor.
Now that your brains are all warmed up, we're going to talk about the exciting things that we have planned today. So, if you take a look at our agenda here, this is a rather crude agenda because it's on poster paper. Normally, you would find this on canvas or nicely written on the board as well, but for the sake of today. So, we already did our number talk, we warmed up our brains, and we are ready to learn today. We're going to do an opener today about Girl Scout cookies. Who doesn't like Girl Scout cookies, right? And then, we're going to do our mini lesson. Today's mini lesson is going to be whole group. It'll be a real short lesson on volume of cylinders. And then, we're going to do a quick check, you're going to do a quick check, on quizzes and prove to me that you know how to do volume of cylinders. From that, we'll form our groups, and we'll break into the blue, white, and gold groups. And you can see each one of these groups has different tasks for today. Okay? So, if you're the blue group, you are going to go ahead to volume of pyramids and cones and go from there. You're going to be independent learning today. If you're in the white group, you get to work with me, and we're going to do some review of rectangular prisms. Some of you missed the last class, so you'll sit with me and get caught up real quick, and then either stay with me or hop up to another group. Okay? And then, we also have the gold group. You're going to start on some of these rich tasks today, and if you get those done, you get to move on ahead to the volume of pyramids and cones. Okay? When our work time is all finished, oh, gold group, you're going to work with Mrs. Chen today if you see, if you have any struggles. She'll be checking in with you. You can work independently or collaboratively. So, then we'll come back together, all of us together, we'll do our wrap-up and our reflection. It'll be a canvas discussion today, and then we'll talk about what you have planned or what we have planned for your at-home day. So, the main objective today is that you will be able to find the volume of cylinders. Everybody in this room will leave here knowing how to find the volume of cylinders and be able to apply that to a real-world situation. Some of you may go further than that and learn the volume of pyramids and cones and be able to apply that to real-world situations. Sounds exciting, right? Yes. Okay. So, we are going to take a look at Girl Scout cookies. I don't know if everybody could see the screen there. It's kind of an awkward angle for some of you. I want you to just by yourself, independently, think about what do you notice and what do you wonder? You can write it down if you'd like to, or you can just leave it up here. So, take a minute and think, what do you notice and what do you wonder? Now, I would like for you to do a turn and talk and look at your neighbor and go ahead and share your ideas with your neighbor. What did you notice and what did you wonder? Go ahead and finish up those conversations. We're going to come back together here in 15 seconds. Oh, wow, you're speedy. All right. Would anyone like to share what they noticed or what they wondered? Ms. Browning?
The boxes are facing, are different directions. You have some that are horizontal and some that are vertical, and I wondered if you would have put them the same if you would have been able to fit more boxes in there.
Oh, interesting. Anyone else like to share what you noticed or wonder?
Well, we wondered how many were in there, and we noticed that since they weren't stacked very neatly and organized, we couldn't figure that out easily.
So, you're saying it probably was not a FedEx or UPS employee loading these up? Or a math teacher, for that matter?
Our team also noticed that the license plates from Tennessee.
Oh, interesting. Do you think that's going to play into our problem today? I don't know. Anything else?
We talked about if the boxes for different kinds of cookies are different sizes, so if you were trying to decide if you wanted like how many girl, thin mints, but the thin mints and the dosy does were in different sized boxes, if that would affect things. You also made us really hungry.
And I'm also noticing that the car is in the sun, and so those cookies are going to melt if they don't move them.
So, what if I ask you, if you could calculate how many boxes were in there, what information would you need from me? Take a minute and just think about that. What information would you need from me in order to be able to calculate how many boxes Do a turn and talk. Oh, I'm sorry. You're going to go ahead and turn and talk again and talk with a neighbor, someone close to you, and share your ideas. Go ahead and head back to your seats. I heard some people write on the money with this. So, anybody like to ask me or share with me what they want to know from me pertaining to this problem?
Okay, so a couple of things Katie and I would like to know is the dimensions of the trunk base, the depth, the length, the height, and then the dimensions of each box type, each flavor of cookie.
Which dimensions of the box?
The dimension of the box for each type of cookie.
Oh, for each type of cookie box? They're different sizes?
I think so. I think they have varied their size.
Well, that made this problem suddenly more difficult now, didn't it? Hmm. So, if we were doing this in class, you know, I would scroll down here, and I would give you the box with dimensions, and I would give you the Rogue. Now, and I would just, I wouldn't give you the dimensions of the Rogue, I would just go ahead and give you the volume, and you would figure out that you come to another snag here because your boxes, they only give you one box, they don't give you all the boxes, and your dimensions of your box are in centimeters, and the dimension of your Nissan Rogue is in cubic meters. So, you'll have some conversion involved here, too. So, typically, now's the time where I would have you work together, work on some dimensions with this, and then I would cut you off and say, okay, we're going to head into the mini lesson on a cliffhanger, and we'll revisit this at the end of the block. So, that's usually when kids are like, no, no way. We got to know how many boxes are in there. I said, well, you're going to have to wait. I said, well, you're going to have to wait. So we would now go into a whole-group mini lesson. Now, we use the whole group when they are easier lessons. Okay, so today's lesson is volume of cylinder. Most students can grasp this pretty quickly. If it were a more difficult topic, then those lessons are best taught in small groups. And I've been known to teach the lesson three or four times a block. Okay, so depending on, you know, where students are, or how difficult it is, it's much easier to see where students are struggling if you're talking to six or seven kids as opposed to 30, 35 kids. So the, the small groups as well really allow you to hear your instruction. So if I have a high group of students who thinks, well, I already know all this, this is my chance as a teacher to throw out one of those really difficult problems and say, well, what do you think about this? And be able to challenge every single level and really meet every single kid where they are. And that keeps every kid engaged rather than the one-size-fits-all instruction that we used to do. Okay, so this is just an example of what quick mini lesson looks like. You know, it's kind of your standard notes. That hasn't changed a ton. You know, students still have to get the information somehow. And we still have our textbooks. This is still what it looks like. Not a lot of change there. So after I do the mini lesson, you know, students would take these down in their notebook. Then I would ask students to do a quizzes. If you're not familiar with what quiz is, has, have you all heard of what Kahoot is? Okay, so it's just an online multiple choice. Well, now they've made it, you can do all kinds of things. You can put things in order, and, but it's like a game to kids. They just love it. Quizzes allow students to go at their own pace. Whereas Kahoot, everybody, you've got one problem up here, and everybody's answering real quickly, kind of like at BW3's, the trivia questions. Quizzes allows them to go at their own speed. And you can also turn that timer off. So your kids who have more anxiety, then they're not seeing that timer there, and it's not freaking them out. But if I just give, you know, four, five, six questions, this is what it looks like on the teacher's screen. Immediate feedback. So at this point, I can look at these top two students and say, they're going to go into the blue group. They have cylinders. They don't need any more practice on cylinders right now. They've got it. Okay? I can look and say, you know what? They only missed one here. And you know what? The student underneath here, yes, it's a 67%, but when I look, all three of these kids missed this number. Matter of fact, look how many kids missed number five. So before I break kids into a group, I might want to go back over number five. Okay? And so I could group these three kids together. And then you'll see, we have a lot of red down here, at the red zone. The red zone comes with me today. Okay, and the red zone, we're going to do a little brushing up of the rectangular prisms. And then we're going to go back over cylinders. Before we jump into those juicy tasks, we're going to do some more building there. And that's just, you know, and that's all in the work time. Now, if it's just me and I don't have an instructional aid in the room, this still runs. That's always the big question, well, what if I don't have anybody else in there? Your high group will work independently. There is always one person in there, in that group, willing to help the other students, every time. I've never run into where there wasn't somebody willing to help. Or even with a little, oh, hey, Mr. Kirshner, would you be willing to help Ms. Spannenberg with that? Once you ask them, they're like, they're not going to turn you down. They're great. And then I can get this lower group going on something, and real quickly just pop over here and say, oh, Rhonda, are you good on this? Let me see what you've done. Oh, that's wonderful, Rhonda. Would you mind showing the rest of your group how you solved that? And so you find those leaders. You build those leaders in the classroom. And that is one of the magical things of workshop. Kids are talking. It is so good for SEL. So good. We have kids communicating. They're working together. They're starting to think of themselves as, oh, my gosh, I actually can do math. Because everything we give them, if you think about the Girl Scout problem, that's a low entry point. Every single person could pick something up of what they noticed there, something that they wondered. Even if it's a license plate. Well, I noticed the license plate's Tennessee. Really? That's interesting. So there's always an entry point for kids. And that way, you don't have them sitting there just wondering. Maybe I'll go back here. Now, during this work time, and this was when I just did a catch-and-release, I noticed that students were struggling with rounding to the nearest tenth. The directions everywhere said round to the nearest tenth. I thought, why am I getting, why am I getting answers of 531? It says the tenth. Or why am I getting 892 and 56 hundreds? The nearest tenth. And so stopped everybody, okay? Everybody, eyes up here. I'm noticing something we all have in common. We're all struggling with the rounding. So let's take a look at what that means. So you, that's that catch-and-release. And you can address that all-in-one moment. The best moment is when you have an IA or somebody in there assisting who's been walking around and comes up to you and says, hey, Mrs. Taylor, I've seen several kids really struggling with that rounding. And you can say, oh, thank you so much. Let's stop, let's go over that. So before they go any further. So that's one of the great things as well about having some help in the room and really working with your IAs, with your coaches in the building, and getting them directly involved with the kids as well. The other thing that we absolutely love about these small groups is the equity. You know, you are reaching every single kid where they are. You're meeting them where they are. And you don't have anybody just sitting there, you know, wishing that they could participate or wishing that the teacher would come talk to them. You know their needs, and you're able to address them right there on the spot. And that's, for me as a teacher, that's a total game changer. You know, whereas you used to just look out at a big room of kids and, you know, look at their eyes and hope they got it. So, yeah, there's some sort of formative assessment there in the middle, which is the quizzes. I can see how kids are doing. They work. There's often a choice of work in there. And if you look at, we gave you a packet just so you could kind of get an idea of what the juicy tasks look like. They're rich tasks. Our Math Workshop person calls them juicy task. And we didn't really care for that word, so we call them rich tasks. If you look through that packet, the last couple of pages in there are what we call a must-do, may-do menu. And we break this apart day by day. And on the teacher's copy, there's student names in there. Or sometimes those groups are formed on the fly, as we did today. But it gives kids, look, you need to do these things. These are in your must-do. Once you get the musts done, here's choices to do in the may-do. And a lot of times, homework comes from the may-do list. If they get everything completed, it comes from that list. So, speaking of the homework, the homework is also differentiated. So if I've had a group working on pyramids and cones, it doesn't make sense for them to have the same homework as that cylinder group. It just doesn't make sense. Now, Big Ideas Textbooks, which we have up until Algebra, their online platform is phenomenal. Because you can assign different problems to every kid. Every kid could have their own homework assignment. And built within that, you can give them as many tries as you want per problem. And so the student can keep working. There's a live tutor on there. So if the kid's struggling, there's different, you know, hints that they can get. But they're getting that immediate feedback. I can't think of much worse as when I was a kid and I went home and I had 35 math problems and I did them all wrong. And so now I've just perfected a strategy of doing them wrong. And you're trying to break that habit then the next day. And you wasted however long it took you to do 35 problems. And now just giving kids, you know, five, six, seven problems a night, before we were hybrid, we don't, you know, do that now, but on a regular schedule, giving them five, six, seven problems a night, and they be able to get that immediate feedback of, hey, I got those right, then that also helps. It also helps me to form my groups for the next day. So before my kids come in, I can look at that and say, well, Angela, you did perfect on that. Great, you're ready to move on. Tony, not so great. So I feel like I can call you guys out. So at the end of class, we'll all go back to our seats, and we're going to do a wrap-up. We're going to wrap up what were the important items. Where is everybody? You may not have gotten through everything. That's okay. The important thing is that I didn't run out of things for you to do. You're not just sitting there ever wondering what's next. There's always something. So where did everybody end up? Where do we go from here? And then there's that reflection piece. Sometimes that reflection is done just in their math notebook. And it's very personal and private. Other times, we have a discussion with that of, well, what do you think are the key points from today? And you look at your, you go back to your I-can statement. Is this what we got out of today? Did you learn how to find volume of cylinders? Did anybody learn pyramids and cones? Can you apply that? We talk about that. And then we have them write down, if you're doing it just in their notebooks, what are key points for me? What are, me as a student? Do I need to really watch my rounding? Am I forgetting to square the radius? Am I plugging it into my calculator wrong? Yep, that happens. So sometimes this is a Canvas discussion. So before they leave, they post on Canvas. It allows me to see it. So if it's not going to be something, you know, if it's something I need, we can do a Canvas discussion. I want to know what their thoughts are. It's more often like that or Google Form than it is, you know, private in their notebook. Because it gives me as a teacher some good feedback. We talk about before they leave, what they're going to do at home. So with this hybrid schedule, what is tomorrow going to look like for you? As a student, what will that look like? It is typically not going to be just, oh, here's your worksheet. Good luck. I will say, in my subject grade level, we have all now collaborated, and we have decided it is best practice to post the answer keys anytime we do anything at all. And so we have students who will, you know, the whole purpose of that is so they're not perfecting something wrong. And kids have said, I'm so glad you do that. That helps me out so much. And we've trained them at this point, hey, I want you to do two problems and then open up the answer key. Don't do all of those problems, and then go check the answer key. The key is going back. We're teaching them a lot about struggle. That's a big, big piece of Math Workshop. I didn't bring the book with me, but I just bought a book that I'm super nerding out to. It's Productive Math Struggle, Productive Struggle in the Math Classroom. And that's a big piece. You know, at first, when we started this workshop, kids were saying, you know, she's not helping me. She's not giving me the answer. Right. I'm not giving you the answer. And that was frustrating to them. And now that they're into it, they know that they're not going to get the answer. And they're going to have to tell me exactly where they're struggling. My six-year-old says, I don't get it. I'm like, oh, girl, you're going to learn this real fast, that those words aren't okay. So those are words and things that we teach the kids. We've been going through the mathematical practices. So we wanted to, there's a little more about the reflection, but I'm going to turn it over to Rhonda to actually show you what it looks like.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Thank you, Mrs. Chin. And thank you so much for your attention. We're very proud of the hard work of these teachers. And it's taken a long time and trial and error. And we're very brave at moving forward with this. So thank you, teachers. And we want to celebrate by sharing this video with you. So we tried to build context of what this looks like. We tried to show you what it looks like and have you experience it yourself. But we also want to show you our students at Carmel Middle School experiencing this workshop with their teachers. So we are going to show you that video. And here we go.
Attending to each student's individual needs is at the center of Math Workshop. Every day at Carmel Middle, you will see differentiation, small group instruction, student discourse, and collaboration. This video will take you inside classrooms to illustrate math instruction across three grade levels. You will see Number Talks in Mrs. Byer's room, taught by her student teacher, Ms. Miller. Then we will show you how Mrs. Wright introduces content to sixth-grade students with multiple entry points, followed by the expert facilitation provided by Mrs. Taylor in eighth grade. Enjoy. Number Talks are a piece of Math Workshop where students mentally solve computation problems and talk about their strategies. Number Talks encourage students to think outside of the traditional algorithm. They are encouraged to think flexibly about numbers and properties of arithmetic. They communicate their thinking and discover other strategies shared by their peers. This develops a deeper number sense. Watch as these seventh graders share strategies for solving a multiplication problem where they would probably rely on an algorithm if given a pencil and paper.
38 times 3. Think about how you would mentally go about solving this problem. 328 times 3.
Uh, 328 plus, uh, times 3 times, was 328.
Okay, so you're saying add it three times?
Yeah.
984. Did you do that all in your head?
Yeah.
Nice. Any other ways of doing it? Yeah?
You can multiply each digit by 3, and then you can add them all up.
Each digit by 3. So 300 times 3, and then 20 times 3, and 8 times 3? Add them all up, and what did you get for your answer? Good. Any other ways?
I think it was, um, 328, uh, 325.
325?
Also 553.
What is 325 times 3?
975.
Did you say 975? So we have 975.
And then we do 3 times, 3, subtract, subtract, subtract.
Oh, okay. So she rounded it 325. Do you have another way?
No.
Okay.
You could round 328, and then subtract 30.
Oh.
300, uh, 998.
Yes.
And then subtract 30.
Look at all those different ways.
In any subject area, students enter each day at varying levels of readiness. Engaging activities with built-in opportunities for support from their teacher and peers bridges the gap between the gap between what they can do at the outset of the task and what they need to be able to do as a result of the task. An excellent example of designing tasks around readiness is happening in Mrs. Wright's sixth-grade class. Let's take a look.
So any words, phrases, pictures, any of those that you remember about integers, number lines, or opposites? That's what they're putting on your desk. Okay? Does everybody have a marker? All right, here we go. Ready, set, go.
Mrs. Wright starts with an activity called Mathagories, which you guessed it, is based on the game Scattergories. They will write and draw everything they know about the topic of integers before looking at the lists made by their classmates. Mrs. Wright then follows up with a vocabulary video about integers, giving students an additional opportunity to add to their lists. They will then share with a partner and then with the whole group. The instruction is engaging, incorporating peer collaboration and movement. When instruction is designed so expertly, a student with little knowledge of the topic adds to their background knowledge, and a student farther along in the learning sequence can share more sophisticated examples. When a teacher scaffolds a concept in this way, the likelihood of strong student outcomes increases. Effective facilitation of Math Workshop looks differently than it did in past math classrooms. Instead of teachers showing and telling students how to solve problems and students working in isolation, teachers facilitate, clarify, connect, monitor, and collect data as students solve problems. Teachers work with individuals and small groups while students collaborate with their classmates. Our next stop will be in Mrs. Taylor's eighth-grade classroom. Math Workshop thrives with established norms. On this particular day, algebra students guided each other through problems where they'd become stuck.
Wait, oh, yeah, five. Okay. X squared plus five, right?
And then what times two is going to get you twenty-eight?
Ten.
Ten X. Oh, it's X. Can't be forgetting that.
Plus six.
Good. Very good. And then what's your GCF of these?
And then what, that times what gets you twenty-five X to the third?
Five X.
Yep. Good. And then plus what?
Plus three.
So you're going to take this plus this in front of this?
Why? In this exchange, Mrs. Taylor was able to assess the understanding of both students and get a sense of their mastery on a mathematical concept.
So now, why can you write the four plus five X squared together?
Because they're both.
Because they're the greatest concepts.
One can easily see that in this classroom, trust, respect, and responsibility are very important, as well as using positive words with each other. This promotes an environment of academic safety, a place where your ability to learn math is fluid and expandable, where we ask questions and reflect on our learning.
Thank you very much. And please join me in thanking our teachers for all of their hard work each and every day. This is not a simple task. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take those at this time.
First, a huge thank you to your entire team. The math movie was fabulous. And I'm hoping that will appear on our YouTube page, perhaps?
Emily can help us out with that, hopefully.
So popping up the Florida question, Katie?
First, I just have a comment. I was definitely a child who struggled with math. And so when all my millennial counterparts are complaining about all the changes, I actually am one who's like, yes, absolutely. Because sitting in rows and having only one way to do it did not work for me at all. And I definitely saw how I struggled all the way, I would say till now even, with concepts that if I would have known that there were other options, then I definitely would have been able to do them. So as a kid who was probably, and there's definitely kids now, I just wanted to say like, thank you. So my next question is, I love the differentiation. I love how you're able to differentiate between kids who struggle and work a little bit more on this and the homework. What about when it comes time for a test? Are they all taking the same exam? How is that differentiated? Or is it?
So it depends. Sometimes they have different assessments. And it goes back to Rick Warmley saying, you know, fair isn't always equal. And so our goal is that they could all take the same one. That doesn't always happen. You have to, again, meet them where they're at. There are varying levels to those standards. You know, the standard could be here, and the standard can be here, and it's still the exact same math standard. And we've talked about in our subject grade levels, how do we still assess your highest learner, you know, on the same standard as your lowest learner? And so sometimes they are different. And you know what? Kids don't really notice even that they take different ones. They talk about it because there's enough of the same things in there that, you know, if they do talk about it, they're like, oh, yeah. You know, they don't really question it. But yeah, sometimes they're the same, sometimes they're different. It just depends.
Thank you.
Well, first, echo Leila. Leila, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for what you do every day for our kids. Also, I was glad to be able to see the video and to see how kids are doing it today. I've heard how kids have a much easier time with masks than those that are above kindergarten. So it was nice to see what we were doing and doing it in a safe way. So thank you for that, too.
I will say, too, that I'm seeing a lot more, and Angela, I'm sure you are, too, now that we're to the three feet, teachers are feeling like they can really get more groups together. You know, it was really tough when it was six feet. And kids want to collaborate. They don't like the rows now. They're tired of the rows. And so anytime, you know, we have little tape on the carpet where the desks are, we're like, move the desks. And you'll see, you know, they're on the floor, they're working together. And that's a lot easier now with the three feet than it was with the six feet.
Any other questions or comments?
And so this same style demonstrated today, is that consistently used in the honors classes? Yes. In all middle schools, not just Carmel Middle?
I can't speak to that one.
And hands down, this has been my favorite school board meeting yet.
Oh, wonderful.
We're just beginning. I do want to say and share what I noticed most, which is one of the reasons I like, I'll just throw it scouting, is that in the classroom, we're not just teaching math. We are touching on every soft skill that our students are going to need, the communication skills, those interpersonal skills that they're going to need when they, you know, out in the real world, when they're interviewing for a job, as well as what I, the flexibility, that's the high, that I took, that speaks volumes. And I think many of our students think there's only one way to do things, and they're very rigid in thought. And helping them see that there are different perspectives and helping them learn and grow, that, I love all the math that we're teaching, but I really like to see and have been, I'm very pleased to see that all of these other soft skills are really being reinforced in the classroom. So thank you.
There are 20 expectations in Math Workshop that we work through with the kids. And one of the very first ones is, well, actually, number one, is be an active listener. And so we take time at the very start of the year, and we talk about what does that mean? And you'll find out every single class, you know, we make a list together, and every single class will tell you, eye contact, everyone. And so it does take that teaching moment of, you know, we're going to be active listeners right now. It's almost like that elementary thought of, you know, put the bubble in your mouth. But it is, that's one of the great things built into Math Workshop. You're exactly right, is teaching those soft skills with kids.
Any other questions?
Well, seeing that we don't have any other questions, I do just want to give a huge thank you to, let's see, and I didn't realize you were Dr. Rhonda Turner. So that's wonderful. And Laura Chen, Kristin Taylor, have not met you before. Thank you so much for joining us. Mrs. Pittman, thank you for coming out as well. And Angela Snyder, thank you for contributing, even though I don't know that you had planned to. So it's been fantastic. We really appreciate all you have been doing and you continue to do to really help foster learning opportunities for our students each and every day. So with that, we will move along to board reports. Dr. Beersford.
You guys need to scoot. I understand. It's a school night. And really appreciate what you're doing. I kind of just kept having the feeling like, I wonder what job I would have if I would have had math teachers like that. Who knows? I would have not been a journalism English major. I bet I've been doing something with accounting or engineering or who knows? But thank you so much. That was fantastic. See, we do catch and release in the boardroom, too. First, I just wanted to officially announce that the Clay Center Elementary Principal will be Rhonda Turner, and the Clay Center Assistant Principal will be Callie Flagler. They're both serving in Orchard Park right now. And, you know, I don't know if too many people that probably didn't know that, but it has the worst kept secret in Carmel Clay Schools' history. But they've been busy keeping things running smoothly at Orchard Park while doing the many details involved in planning opening a new school. And they're doing all that during a pandemic. So we really appreciate their leadership and vision moving forward. And I just kind of wanted to make that an official, an official statement. I know that the board has been concerned about House Bill 1005 and the Senate bills that are similar to that. And we've already communicated with our legislators and continued to tell them that we just think that's bad legislation. And one of the things that we had in our letter to legislators was that we really was concerned about Indiana wanting to make Indiana a go-to state for educators, that it was educator-friendly. And we really were, had our hopes up high after the governor had done the study on teacher compensation and had pledged to, you know, a raise to our teachers even when other states around us were going flatline because of the pandemic. And then, of course, that all fell apart as the legislators started diverting money, you know, away from the public school, public schools. And one of the things that we were so concerned about, and we brought up to legislatures, legislators, was that there's a teacher shortage going on. And I caught an article here, and this is by the Institute of Educational Sciences, which is a research arm of the U.S. Department of Education. This is specific to Indiana. Only one in six students who pursue a bachelor's degree in education at State College University end up working as teachers, according to a new report on teachers, the teacher pipeline. And so they've been following students who entered college from 2010 to 2012, and that was the drop-off then. So you can imagine what it is now. You know, we talk about wanting to have a diverse staff, and just 5% of black students who enter education programs went into teaching in Indiana classrooms. And that was, again, part of the study. Of the roughly 11,000 students who pursued a bachelor's degree in education, just 16% eventually received licenses and found jobs in Indiana public schools. So out of 11,000 teachers, 1,760 became part of the workforce. There's more and more, and I'll share this, you know, this article with you. But again, it's really making the point that we tried to make in our, in our letter to legislators, that we really are at a critical space in Indiana where we really need to make some changes and really show that the value that we have for educators. And we want to make Indiana a place where kids want to stay and work and where maybe kids from other states want to be teachers and then say, well, let's go to Indiana. It's a good place to work. So anyhow, I just thought I'd do that, that little commercial. But at the same time, it's, it's something that's meaningful to not only Carmel Clay Schools, but the state of Indiana. I want to give you a little bit of information about a COVID-19 update. And so we had quite a long meeting this morning, kind of going over our data. And we've had five weeks of single-digit positive cases at each level, so elementary, middle, and high school. And that includes students, staff, and teachers. And so we're, the numbers are really going down to, you know, everything's under 10. And the last couple of weeks, didn't even add up to 10. Hamilton County is expected to go to the blue level on Wednesday. And so that's another good sign. As was mentioned tonight by Kristin, the contact tracing guidelines have been changed to three feet in classrooms, but they still remain at six feet in lunch, band orchestra choir, some other activities. So this area is still going to be problematic due mostly to the high percentages of students that attend in person in our district and the probability that there would be high quarantines for every positive case. So there's kind of that back and forth on positive cases versus quarantine. Because if there's not very many cases, of course, it's not, it's not an issue. But when one quarantine can take out a significant number of kids, that's difficult. I know a lot of folks have been contacting you and the administration about our neighbors that are going back to four days a week, I think. And one thing I always wanted to bring up was that Carmel High School and two of our middle schools are running, 86% of their student body is in person doing the hybrid program. And then our other middle school runs at about 80%. And so a lot of the schools around us are running maybe 50% or 60% in person. So really, they're dealing with a much smaller number in their classrooms than others. But that is still a factor that we have to look at. And then finally, I wanted to share just the spring break's coming. And the reason why a lot of us and our team cringe a little bit is because we've always had a surge of cases two weeks after a break. And so spring break coming up. And it'll be important, you know, as folks make those decisions in the spring break and where they go, that they still maintain those safety guidelines and keep pushing those numbers down. So the big question on everybody's mind is what's next? And so what the teams are doing and our middle school administration, our high school administration, administration here at the ESC are working on detailed plans. And we want to be prepared to pivot to everyday in-person programming for grade six through 12. And if the current conditions persist, if we still keep having the, you know, the things that I mentioned that are going well, then once we get that detailed plan done, we would submit that to the Hamilton County Health Department. And then we would start working on what that transition to that might look like. Now, once again, and I think probably people are tired of me saying it, but we're going to go to the health professionals and make sure that we're going to do this the right way and do it safely and follow the guidelines and do that. I do want to remind folks, though, that COVID-19 is still present in our community. It is still here. We may have a convergence of immunizations, and maybe it's the immunizations that are helping us driving those numbers down. Maybe it's because we're doing the safety precautions at a high level. Maybe there's, you know, I heard the theories of herd immunity and all those types of things. I don't know. I would imagine it's probably a combination of all those things. But if we, if we keep continuing to follow the recommendation of the mental community to keep these down, you know, I think that this is no time to let up. You know, this is no time to let our guard down. And I just want to remind everybody to stay the course and mask up and keep your social distance, wash those hands, and for sure, go through this Carmel Clay Schools COVID-19 screener every day. And do not come to school if you answer yes to any of those questions, because that's the way we're going to be able to keep those numbers pressed down. And I hope to get back at some point in time. And I hope to get back at some point in time to, uh, maybe in the near future, to having a in-person every day at our six through twelves. At that point in time, we'd be K twelve. So, uh, with that, I think I'll start my superintendent's report. And, uh, don't be afraid, it's not gonna be that long. Uh, I wanted to say Happy International Women's Day, especially to the ladies in the house. And, uh, and this is Women's History Month, and we're excited to celebrate and learn about the amazing contributions women have made throughout history and here in Carmel Clay Schools' history as well. Uh, in addition, uh, a Women's History Month writing contest will be held at Carmel High School. And students can submit essays highlighting a woman who has impacted the writer as well as touched the lives of others in the community. And so the student winner and their teacher will, uh, will receive a prize pack. So, uh, anyhow, that contest is going on. And, uh, uh, our DEI officer, uh, Terry Roberts is, uh, Roberts Leonard is, um, promoting that and, uh, also putting out a lot of good information this month with, uh, Women's History. We appreciate that. Um, boys' basketball had two big wins last Friday and Saturday on their way to winning the sectional championship. This was the seventh sectional in a row for the program, so they got a good streak going on there. And, uh, so this Saturday, your number-two Greyhounds will play number-one Homestead in the opening round of their Logan'sport Regionals. And that'll be at nine thirty AM on Saturday. So number-one and number-two are squaring off in the, the prelim game of the regionals. And, uh, so, uh, it's time for Hoosier hysteria. Let's, I'll take a road trip to the, the Berry Bowl. And, uh, that's the, uh, the gym at, uh, in Logan'sport, it's called the Berry Bowl. It's one of the oldest gyms in Indiana. And, uh, and you want to get to the Berry Bowl to support your Greyhounds. Um, I did attend that a couple of years ago at the Berry Bowl. And, uh, it's kind of a Hoosiers moment because, uh, it's a two-lane road. And when we went there to go to the night game, you know, eight o'clock's the championship on Saturday. And if you remember in Hoosiers, when all the cars were driving through the country roads, single file with their headlights on, uh, that's what it's like going to the Berry Bowl. So, uh, I would encourage everybody to support your, uh, your Greyhounds. I also want to throw a congratulations out to Junior Eaton Price, who placed twenty-first in the National Linguistics Competition. So that advances him to the semifinal round, uh, where he will compete for a spot on the national team. So we have a, a Greyhound that is, uh, is working the, uh, into the semis to be on the National Linguistics, uh, uh, team, which would be amazing. Uh, I wanted to point out that this is Food Service Staff Appreciation Week. So along with National Nutrition Month, it's Food Service Staff Appreciation Week. Our Carmel Clay School staff works hard every day to serve breakfast and lunch uh, to our in-person and virtual students. They're putting out, uh, you know, lots of food, uh, for, uh, folks to drive through and pick up as well. So, uh, um, we really want to, uh, thank them for their efforts on that. Um, also, as part of this Nutrition Month, we had a great event at Orchard Park Elementary this morning. And so, uh, celebrating school breakfasts, uh, school breakfasts. And we had the American Dairy Association, along with Colts, uh, uh, you know, Blue showed up and, uh, on top of Big Van, and also Ryan Deem, who's a former Colts player, was there. And, uh, he's a big guy still. Uh, he retired a few years ago. But, uh, it was, uh, really a fun, fun thing with lots of music. Uh, we had some Colts cheerleaders. We had our, our all-stars from our food service team out there. And, uh, I think the kids were just a little shocked a little bit as to what was going on when they got off the buses and had to walk through, when they walked through there. Uh, so anyhow, I really, really appreciate that. And, uh, our food service folks just go way above and beyond the call of duty. So, uh, I'm very proud of that, and it was a lot of fun. Um, congratulations to the mock trial team, known as the Firecracker Club, because they won the Greyhounds' first mock trial state championship for Carmel High School. Uh, so our, uh, our mock trial team, uh, won the state. And we actually had two teams that advanced to the state finals, the Firecracker Club and the Trailblazers. Uh, as state champions, they now will be competing at the National High School Mock Trial Championships, and that'll be coming in May. So it's nice to see that, uh, that team, uh, take the state for the first time. Uh, also, I wanted to, I don't know if you've heard of the Academic World Quest, um, team, but, uh, it's really a very interesting, um, competition, but it's basically about global awareness. And, uh, and they have little, like, categories. And, uh, let's see if I have that, uh, sheet. This is kind of, here's the topics that they were, um, that they studied for and which will be going on at the World Quest as well. But, um, global protests, shifting sands, the Arab Spring, ten years on, international labor organizations, US foreign service in the twenty-first century, great decisions, country in focus, I don't even know if I can pronounce it, Uzbekistan, uh, exploring peace in a world of conflict, fraying alliances, looking to a post-pandemic economy. And then, of course, current events. So these are the topics that they, uh, they do in this competition. And, uh, our Academic World Quest, uh, for the state championship, we entered, um, five teams. And the, and that, so there's a total of nineteen teams. And your Carmel, uh, Greyhounds came in first, second, third, fourth, and seventh in the state of Indiana. So, uh, the top three teams, which are all from Carmel High School, will compete, uh, in the nationals. So I wanted to do a big congratulations and a thank you to the club sponsor, John Carter, there at Carmel High School. And for the bell ringer, um, this one just, uh, I just feel so happy for these guys. But the WHJE ninety, what is it, ninety-three point one on your FM dial, um, is the National Radio Station of the Year for two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, they, uh, they just really, uh, took the nation by storm. They had twenty-three individual winners. They had eleven runners-up in forty-one different categories at this year's Interclegiate Broadcasting System Awards. So, uh, uh, they just do an amazing job. Uh, and the categories were like, you know, public service announcements and specialty music show and public affairs programming and comedy programming. Uh, it just goes on and on and on. And, uh, just an amazing, you know, they're running a really very professional radio station at Carmel High School. And if you've ever caught, you know, a game and the, the commentary and the pre-game and the post-game, it's, uh, it kind of reminds me of ESPN. So, uh, so hats off to the Greyhounds. Congratulations on their national, uh, their national award there. And, uh, that concludes my superintendent's report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Any board members have any report or anything they'd like to share this evening? Yes, please.
Yeah, Dr. Beresford, on your report, your COVID report, was there any information about the teachers and getting vaccinated?
Uh, none other than.
Have you heard anything?
Well, the only thing we've, we've, the feedback that we've gotten so far that, um, there are teachers that have, have gotten the vaccinations. Um, the, most of those have come where they've been going, they've gone to like a Meyer or Walmart and, or, uh, what's the third one? A Kroger. And they've, uh, they've become aware of it, and then the teachers all go there. Um, the, the websites, we've found, that have, um, for the three places have not been very good. We got a report today, it's pretty clunky and, uh, very difficult to get through. So, uh, we're anticipating that'll improve as time goes on. But, uh, we are happy that finally, that there is an avenue now for teachers and, uh, for that focus to, to be able to get those immunizations. So, so I was talking about that convergence of immunizations and, and, uh, the safety guidelines. And, uh, uh, it's hard to picture what all's, you know, doing. But I definitely think it's, uh, great for our staff to be able to, to now be eligible for those immunizations.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Well, we have left to our upcoming date. So our next board meeting, our regular business meeting, is on March the twenty-second. And I'm happy to report that on Friday, April second, starts spring break for everyone. With that, may I get a motion on the table to adjourn our meeting? Thank you, Pam, second.
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Meeting adjourned.